I am Joe Pecat representing the North Hennepin Area Chamber of Commerce and I'd like to thank you for your attendance this evening. The North Hennepin Area Chamber and the League of Women Voters of Brooklyn Park, Osseo, Maple Grove are cosponsoring this candidate forum to encourage voter interest in the upcoming election on November 6th. Neither organization endorses any of the candidates for office. We would like to thank the City of Osseo for the use of their facility for this forum and CCX Media for their support in televising this event live and for scheduling the cable cast replays. It is now my pleasure to introduce Kirsten Chomi representing the League of Women Voters for our area.
Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to welcome you to the candidates' forum this evening. We are pleased to give you, the voters, this opportunity to get to know the men and women vying for your vote. Our number one goal is the community engagement of informed voters, so we are so thankful that you've joined us this evening. The League of Women Voters is an organization that is nonpartisan and volunteer-based. It is organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While the LWV members do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse nor support political parties nor candidates. The LWV does encourage its members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. However, the views expressed in this forum are those of the individual candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. By sponsoring this forum this evening, the League provides an opportunity for citizen participation and exposure to the candidates, but again, does not provide an endorsement of any kind. All viable candidates have been invited to participate this evening, although we have one person that was unable to join us. Again, we're here, starting with the City of Osseo. These people are voting, are vying for two seats on the city council. Our candidates are Juliana Halstrom, Larry Stelmach, Sloan Walgren, and Richard Weber. In tonight's forum, the candidates will start with their opening questions that they all received in advance to prepare for tonight's forum. They have one minute to answer these questions. Then our candidates will have up to 30 seconds to respond to the questions coming from the audience. Finally, they will be given one minute for their final statements. Candidates, the League would like to request you refrain from making any personal attacks on your fellow candidates. I'm going to point out my timekeeper this evening. He's double handing it there. Nice job. He will show you when you have 15 seconds to finish your statements, and then he will show you when your time has expired. Please finish your sentence at that time, or else I'll be directing the next speaker's turn. And the order is randomly pre-done, although it's three of you, but you know, pay attention. I'll keep you jumping. I'd like to also ask everyone to please silence all communication devices at this time. Silence, all communication devices at this time. Guess why I'm repeating it? Every forum I've been at this year. Thank you. Our issues are handing out cards and pens as you need for questions. Please raise your hand and they will get your cards to me. And please follow these guidelines for your questions. They cannot be in personal attack on any candidate. Questions may not have already been asked. Similar ones, we might combine just to cover the topic. And please write legibly so that we can even know what it is you wanted to ask. Thanks. Okay? Again, we appreciate that CCX Media will be streaming this forum and then rebroadcasting it for your convenience. All right, we'll go to the first question. Please tell us about your background and previous city involvement that support your candidacy for this position. First responder will be Ms. Juliana Halstrom.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to all of our hosts tonight. I'm Juliana Halstrom. I was born and raised north of Duluth, and I have been living in Osseo since 2014. I was an original resident at Five Central Apartments and have so bought a single-family home in Osseo since. I started working in 2015 on the Public Safety Advisory Commission. I completed a commission on the comp planning. I also completed, at the time that the entity closed, a commission with Northwest Hennepin Human Services Council. And I am currently on the EDA and president of the EDA. I have moved to Osseo and made it my home, and I feel it's very important to serve my neighborhood and community. And one thing that I have to offer is my time.
Thank you. Larry Stelmach.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. Thank you for everybody who's listening. My name is Larry Stelmach. I've been an Osseo resident for about 16 years with my lovely wife Kathy. We have three children, a one-year-old and twin nine-year-olds. I say twins because that tells you I can multitask, but I'm pumped. That's as funny as I get for the evening. Some of the things that I've done for the city, I've served on the city council. This is, this will be the end of my four-year term coming up here, and I'm hoping to be re-elected to a second term. I serve on the Economic Development Authority as the treasurer right now. I currently serve on park and rec and the HR committee, the risk committee, as well as public safety, which I chair. Previously, I was also on the planning commission, which I came into to serve, and after a little while, I chaired that before I came up to run for council. What I've done in the city is tried very hard to keep taxes as low as I can with services up. I live here. I want a clean, safe community. How I think I can add value with that is during the day of my job is being a project manager, which means I try and organize, I look at numbers, and I can work with a lot of different groups and collaborate with leadership.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I won't let you go that crazy.
All right.
Sloan Walgren, please.
Evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. My name is Sloan Walgren. I've been fortunate enough to grow up in the City of Osseo. My wife and I chose to raise our kids in the town. I've lived in Osseo for almost 40 years. I love this town. Professionally, I worked for the Wayzata School District, and I've spent about the last decade prior to that working in municipal government. My involvement with the City of Osseo, I'm on the Osseo Parks Commission. I also am a youth, volunteer youth coach for the Osseo Maple Grove Youth Athletic Association for my children, and I currently serve on the Osseo School District. I'm running for candidacy is I just want to get involved and help the city maintain its unique small-town charm that we have. Thank you.
Next question. What are the most critical issues facing the City of Osseo over the next several years, and what policies will you support or initiate if elected to address these challenges? First responder will be Mr. Walgren.
Couple of critical issues, I believe, facing our City of Osseo the next couple of years are obviously is our budget. We pay a lot of tax dollars to the City of Osseo. We want to make sure that those dollars are being spent wisely. So I'll work very hard to make sure that each and every dollar we spend is being spent effectively and efficiently. Another issue, I believe, that is very important to the vitalization of our small-town charm is our main street in Osseo. I think we need to work with those small businesses that are currently here and ones that may be looking to come to Osseo and work with them to bring them to our cities so that we have that vibrant downtown feel, and we keep that for our residents and attract people to come to our town on the evenings, weekends, and holidays. Thank you.
Mr. Stelmach.
I definitely agree with the budget item that Sloan had shared. That's a very, it's a huge piece. Another piece I hear when I'm out talking to people is public safety right now is it's a very hot topic. And beyond that, people, it still lingers in their mind from, you know, eight years ago when the city was in, you know, really tight financial place, and it pulled itself back through that, through the leadership of the time. Osseo, I think, is, it's small enough that I think as we develop forward, and we're going to have to develop because we need other developers to come in and create properties and that tax revenue helps the city survive, we're going to have to have the right partnerships that way to make sure that it's healthy, it's long-term, and it doesn't affect that small-town charm.
Ms. Halstrom.
Well, naturally, I agree with that the small-town charm of Osseo is unique, and that's very important to keep that. I will do everything I can to find grant money to support saving our water tower. I feel that that's a means stay in our community and something that everybody recognizes Osseo for. Some of the challenges that are affecting us are affordable housing and our naturally-occurring affordable housing, and it's important to me to make sure that we look at the possibility and possibly adopt in resolutions for advanced sale and notice to residents. We had some problems on Sixth Avenue this year, and I don't want to see those repeated. I just feel that we have to take a look at these things. They're important issues.
Next question. Osseo is continuously challenged to fund all the city's services its residents would like to have. Do you believe the city needs to provide all the current services it currently does, or should it enter into agreements with larger neighboring cities to provide some services to the city? Why or why not? Yeah, that's a one-minute question. Sorry, I just read this. Which services would you outsource if you had to make that choice? Luckily, you had this one in advance. So, Ms. Halstrom, you got this one first.
Osseo is unique, and I think with limited staff, and we have a great public works department, we have a great public safety with police and fire. I don't feel that I would be in favor of outsourcing any of them. I feel that what we could improve on possibly would be to cooperate with other departments and possibly getting some grant writings professionals in to seek grants in areas of development or our water tower or these kinds of issues. And I feel that we've balanced our budget, we've done well, and we've improved our bond ratings, so I know we can do it and we can continue on in the same way.
Mr. Walgren.
I don't believe that I would choose to cut or reduce any of our current city's services that we offer. People, these services have been here for many years. People expect these services, they're familiar with them. I do want to make sure that, as a city, we're not trying to become too large. We're not trying to become a Brooklyn Park or a Maple Grove. I think that the city's services that we have support our city, and the residents really appreciate the services that we have. Our staff is wonderful. They're very efficient, and the main thing is, oh, they're very personable, and they develop that relationship with their residents, which I think is very key.
Mr. Stelmach.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's a great question. It's something that's been, you know, talked about since I started getting involved anyway. Part of the reason that I decided to get involved early on was when the police department was threatened. It was feeling more to me like an agenda than a conversation from some people, so I felt like I had to do something. That said, I like the direction that we've gone with our public safety department right now. There's great camaraderie between the fire department. Oh, I'm sorry.
closer to the mic.
Is that, is that better? No, no, that's okay. Is this better? Okay. Nope. Thank you very much. So, the public safety department has done a great job. The police department and the fire department, they have a good collaborative relationship. I know the police department, they've used grant writers in the past to try and secure funds. The fire department thinks outside the box, and they get involved in other ways to try and create revenue to help pay for some of that equipment. Speaking of equipment with public works, it's been a discussion point in the past where we don't really want to outsource them, but what are things that maybe we could, like a plow truck or something like that, or a dump truck, split that cost with another city. We get to use it half the time, they get to use it half the time. That would have to be done just right, and to now, that hasn't been refined to where we could employ it, but things like that, I think, could help us.
Next question, before we move on to the quick answers. Local businesses are taxpayers but often not voting residents. In what way will you reach out to best understand their needs and provide for fair representation in city council decision-making? Please share your thoughts. First responder will be Mr. Stelmach.
Another solid question. I think the best way to reach out to them is actually walk through their door, see what they do for a living, meet them. They're a human being, and so are you, and establish that. Then ask them what, I don't know, I guess ask them all the same, same two questions. Can you tell me two things that you really like about doing business in town? And what are two things that you think would help improve your ability to do business in town? And I'd ask them all the same thing, because they're, they're the ones out there doing their job. They know how to run their own business better than a city does, and how can we kind of get out of your way to succeed? I guess that would be my answer.
Ms. Halstrom.
Here again, Osseo is unique, and one of the things I'd like to do is encourage more business representatives that are able to fill our seats on EDA and public safety. They're both in the bylaws that if you're a business owner but not a resident, you're still entitled to fill the seats in the commissions. I'd like to see them apply and have their voice heard as well. I think that the business owners represent a great deal in our Osseo character with our downtown business and our downtown walkable businesses, and I think it's important to always listen to them, and if we know that there's issues that are going to have a direct impact on them, it's good to address them personally. We're a small enough town, and we can do that.
Mr. Walgren.
Thank you. I agree with what Julienne and Larry both said. I think the biggest thing is making, introducing yourself to them, having that connection with them, so they don't have any hesitations in coming to you with any concerns or needs. I would also invite them to, you know, participate in any city meetings that we have, so they can become more involved, so we'll better understand their needs and concerns. I think, just like I would with any resident, you know, taking the time to listen to their issues that they have and treat them just with the respect I would any other resident in town. Thank you.
Our first question, in which you have 30 seconds to respond. How do you plan to keep affordable housing in Osseo? First responder will be Ms. Halstrom.
Like I said before, I have gotten involved in affordable housing in Maple Grove. I've participated on bus tours. I participated with the EDA in looking at what areas we have and what areas possibly could be developed, but I feel that holding on to our naturally-occurring affordable housing is a very important issue.
Mr. Stelmach.
I think it's a, it's a good question. I think I'm also kind of a small-government person. The, it's easy to answer because most of Osseo already is affordable housing. I don't know that the city needs to intercede at this time. There was a situation off of Sixth Street that was, you know, it was sad in parts, but there's a lot of other parts in the city. There was a great presentation that came in, and the presenter named some numbers that somebody with a roommate or two, because I was a renter for a while, could find that affordable. So I'm, it's a fortunate question right now, because there's a lot of affordable housing in town already.
Mr. Walgren.
I agree with Larry. There's a lot of affordable housing in Osseo. I don't have a lot of experience in this area, so I would rely on our city staff to provide us with the information and the resources that we have to, I would also do my homework to make sure we make the best decisions for our residents for the long-term viability of the city. Thank you.
Next question. What dollar amount, if any, should the city commit to incentivizing certain types of businesses to open in Osseo? First responder will be Mr. Walgren.
What dollar should we incent? I guess it depends on the type of the business and what they're going to be bringing to our, to our residents and our community would all depend on my answer to that question.
Mr. Stelmach.
I think the city, you know, uses or leverages the tool of tax incentive financing as best as it can. I'm not for exempting anybody their taxes just to come to town. We're too small, the economy here is too fragile for that, because essentially, that's looking at everybody else in town, resident and business alike, saying, you have to pay their taxes for them, and that's not going to work in a small town.
Ms. Halstrom.
I guess I wouldn't put a dollar amount, and I would like to meet with whomever would be interested in starting a business in Osseo and refer them to come and speak with us as an EDA and see what we have in our toolbox that might match their needs and get creative in financing.
Next question. What are your thoughts about the gateway sign? What messages do you feel are appropriate for the sign, and should the city charge to advertise on it? First responder is Mr. Stelmach.
Thank you. Yes, I do think the city should charge to advertise on it if it's, if it's going to be used commercially that way. If you're a nonprofit, if you're teaming with the city, there aren't charges with that, right? The city does a lot of promotion of things that way. You've got to partner with the city to do it, but then you don't have to pay. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Then you, I'll have to get this a little closer. But then you don't have to pay. But if you're going to use it for commercial use to drive and drive people to your business, the pricing is actually pretty competitive. We haven't had any complaints on it that I'm aware of.
Mr. Walgren.
I think the gateway sign out there is beautiful on 81. It's really turned that area into something very beautiful with the landscaping around there. As far as charging for messaging on the board, again, I think that working with local nonprofits and city, our city messages, although should not be charged any fees, but if we are looking for private businesses looking to increase their revenue, I think we could definitely charge them a fee to help offset the costs of that.
The gateway sign is special to me in the sense that it was the first action item that I took when I joined the EDA. I think that it landed in its proper home. I think it's beautiful. I think it attracts people at that intersection that maybe would think they're waiting a little bit longer than they really are. I think that the pricing has been reviewed by the present council. I agree with what has been set. I think that we could work with the nonprofits a little bit closer and maybe make a package deal for several events with a certain nonprofit, Example Lions.
Next question. How do you propose to help the elderly of our communities? Please name a few programs that you would promote. And speak into the microphone. First responder will be Ms. Halstrom.
I think that we have great senior programs. We have Tuesdays and Thursdays in our community center. It's nice to see our seniors get there and enjoy themselves. It's fun whenever I have a chance to stop in. I think that we have great people and staff that are in charge of these programs, and I just think that keeping these programs and fitness programs for adults is really important for the City of Osseo.
Mr. Stelmach.
It's, it's a good answer. We, we do have the good service that we do things in the community center. We have businesses in town that participate in that on their own. As I recall, the grocery store has one day a week or something like that, where if you order X amount, they can, they can help get it to you, which is a really nice service. And that, again, that's not government-involved, that's the community working on its own. We have a really neat program, the yoga. We have Dee Sitting Back, you're who runs that, and it's great. If you're sitting around, you don't really have a lot to do, it's a way to at least get some stretches in.
And Mr. Walgren.
You know, our yoga classes that we have, our Jazzercise, our Osseo Trolley, all these are great services that we have to offer our residents in Osseo. I do want to make sure that we're able to offer these, these services to Osseo residents first and foremost primarily, but if there are neighboring towns that want to participate in those programs, I think they'd be welcome to join, but I think we're going to have to maybe evaluate some of the programs, because they are becoming so popular, we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to participate in ones that, that want to.
Next question. Do you think Osseo needs an additional full-time police officer? Why or why not? First responder is Mr. Stelmach.
I'm a proponent of that as it sits. The way that the budget is looking for this coming year, we're going to be using some of what the chief has had to do with this part-time budget, which has been really heavy, and pull from that, so we'd get it at a smaller fee. But looping that back to the public safety, in this community and in other communities, people are aware that there's been break-ins. A lot of it has to do, if you're not locking your car or your door, but there's a lot of families, whether you're older or younger, it's scary to have somebody in your house that you didn't invite. So having another officer in town would enable the rest of the officers to relax a little bit on their vacations, as well as increase our service.
Ms. Halstrom.
I'm in favor of it, and sitting on Public Safety Advisory Commission right now, our chief, Chief Mickelson, Michelson, he made a total point for this position with hiring somebody over the summer that was just to do parking and traffic observation and ticketing. And this position ended up paying for itself. So he's been great with our budget. I think that if chief feels that this is important, that we can make it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Walgren.
I would support adding a extra police officer to our police department. Even though it is full-time, I believe that the way the chief has it structured, it's not going to be, in addition of a full-time salaried position to the department, it's only, it's going to alleviate some of the part-time positions that we do have, so we won't have as much expenses there. And I do think that keeping our, our streets safe for our children and our homes safe from burglaries is a huge priority, and so I would definitely support that.
Question. In the past two or three years, rental housing has changed ownership. Residents have been displaced with short notice. Do you feel the city should have ordinances to govern the amount of time residents should be given before having to move? First responder will be Ms. Halstrom.
Yes, I do. I think that what happened here in Osseo has had a domino effect, being involved with the affordable housing people. We saw this on the news, and it wasn't good light for Osseo. I think we can do better, and I think if we get together and draft some sound ordinances that give people a proper amount of time, as well as us on the city, amount of time and notice that these properties are going to be for sale, would be the route I'd like to see happen.
Mr. Walgren.
I agree with what Julienne said. We do have to have ordinances in place to protect our residents in Osseo. It's just the, the right thing to do for them. We also want to make sure we're working with our, our property owners to make sure that they're being treated fairly as well. We have to make sure respecting both, both parties there. We are a small town, and I think we can definitely all work together to make sure that we're taking care of everybody's priorities.
Mr. Stelmach.
I think it is a balanced answer, where the, the resident, as well as the landlord or the site owner, both play a part. The site owner takes a risk when they sign a lease with somebody that you're only going to pay this much for this amount of time, and if I'm going to sever this contract, I have to give you X amount of notice. And that protects the resident as well as the, the site owner. I think when we had our presentation here about naturally affordable housing in Osseo, naturally-occurring affordable housing in Osseo, I asked the question, would that, would some of those situations have been prevented if some of those residents had signed a long-term lease, or if they had been in lease, and they said, yes? So it is already kind of preventable. I'm not sure we need to ordinance that.
What type of businesses would you like to see come to Osseo, and what can you do on the council to help bring these businesses into our city? First responder will be Mr. Stelmach.
I wanted to bring a new restaurant to town for a really long time. We've got a great bar scene in town that has really high-quality food. It's not a greasy spoon. I tried to bring a Mexican restaurant to town. A pizza place popped up. I didn't have anything to do with that, but just trying to bring that traffic, starting those conversations. I wanted to bring a four-star restaurant to town, just to pull in people from further out. Turns out, we have a fantastic automotive, like body shop that's going to be coming into the space that I was thinking of, so I think as long as we're attractive and we're going to be business-friendly, I think the right businesses will kind of migrate towards us.
Mr. Walgren.
I agree. I believe, like, a restaurant, something similar to that would be great to bring into town. I believe that when people come to town for whatever restaurant they're coming to, they visit our shops in town, they patronize those businesses. I've talked with multiple business owners that feel that another restaurant would, wouldn't hurt the other two businesses, other couple businesses in town as far as food service goes, so I think that would definitely be a step in the right direction.
Ms. Halstrom.
I'd really like to encourage that's different from these two, not that I disagree with the restaurant, I also agree with that, but some thinking outside of the box. If we're going to have a blue line mass transportation just short ways from here, we're going to have to look at maybe a personal taxi service or shuttle service, something that could be used in our community outside of summertime with the golf cart. I think that expounding on that would be a great business to bring into town.
You're mind reader, because that was the next question. So what are your thoughts on the light rail line, and do you think the city should work to provide transportation between the city and the stations that are nearby? I'll give you 30 seconds to expand on that. Go for it. Actually, I'm going to start with Mr. Walgren first.
I think the, the blue light rail line is going to be fantastic for our community and our neighboring cities. I do think that we should work to make sure there is affordable transportation for our residents that needed to get to these stations, so they can, can take advantage of this piece of infrastructure that we're going to be building.
Mr. Stelmach.
I think the blue line is going to be far enough away that it won't affect the small-town feel, yet close enough that the residents here can take advantage of it, right? So it's, I think it's in a very good place. I think we've already got some metro transit, like the buses, that could help move people from A to B. I don't know how glorious it is waiting for a bus, but I used to take a bus all the time. And if somebody wants to open up a taxi service and take up some space to run people back and forth, you know, let's see the business plan.
Ms. Halstrom, if you wanted to expand on that at all?
Myself and a council member, Johnson, attended some light rail discussions in Brooklyn Park over the summer. We had four sessions, and some of the ideas that they had to go along with the light rail are really intriguing, and I can see we're having transportation to the stations where there is no parking. I don't know if people are aware, but what's proposed on 85th and 93rd, there will be no parking. So we will have to figure So we will have to figure out a way to get transportation to those stations.
All right. You're on the spot now. I know you're not supposed to pick your favorite child, but you're going to have to. What is your favorite place in Osseo? Your home does not count. First responder will be Halstrom.
My favorite place in Osseo, I have many, but I guess my absolute favorite place is Osseo Meat Market. They carry Bridgman's ice cream and I used to be a Bridgman's girl. Besides many other things.
All right, now I got to know that one. All right. Stomack.
My favorite, my favorite place in Osseo is right across the street, Borbon Park. I love the history that it represents. I love all the groups that got together to, to make it something that would last for a long time. I like old things, I like historic things, things of significance. So I, I would say the park because I've seen every age group, every different type of people with all kinds of opinions go there and get together and have a good time. There's something special about it.
My favorite place in town is definitely Sipes Park. Having grown up here, I know what it used to be and I know what it is now and it's a vast improvement. And I love going there with my kids and playing basketball and playing tennis or just riding our bikes up there and, and watching the local kids play baseball in the evenings during the summer. I think it's just, it's fabulous. It's a great amenity to our city and I, I love it up there.
Okay, we're going to go to our final question in which you get to make your closing statements. So how do you intend to best serve the city and move it forward? And we'll go in reverse order, so we'll start with Sloane Walgren.
I intend to serve the city by just being available to the residents, fielding phone calls, emails, and just working hard to make sure that we're spending every dollar wisely and that we are moving the city forward in the right direction. Past councils done a wonderful job. I have no, no issues or concerns there. I just, I want to be involved and help ensure that this is a great town for my children to grow up in and hopefully one day they'll choose to live here in, in Osseo. Thank you.
Larry Stomack.
What I'm going to strive to do, one of my goals is to just keep that sense of community, which sounds like a kind of a gray fluffy statement, right? But to do it the right way, it means you have to have the right public safety in place. You have to be communicating with the business and the residences, whether that's knocking on their door because the street project just went through and you want to hear what they have to say. Some people aren't comfortable coming out with that stuff, so you go to them to hear it. Or going to the local businesses saying, like we do now, here's a copy of the ordinance that we're going to be reading in a couple of weeks. Give this a read, give us your feedback. What do you think? You're the expert in this line of business. Tell us the challenges and the good things that are in this. Other than that, I guess I'm just going to try and find different ways to drive people to town. I, I had that idea for the spring opener, which is to have a food truck festival and music festival, mini music festival around Borbon Park, just so people could have a May party, get out of the house. What it's really going to do is it's going to take people that might never come to Osseo, have them walk down our streets, look at that house that maybe they can buy it, buy some steaks from the Osseo Meat Market or go to Dean's and get a gallon of milk. Think of little things like that just to keep Osseo on the map.
And Ms. Halstrom.
I think what I would do is continue in my service. Like I said before, I am retired. I have my time to offer. I do spend a great deal in continuing ed and conferences. I attend all of the continuing ed and conferences, not only for economic development, but also in the communities that surround us so that we can see where Osseo meets our neighbors and our neighbors meet Osseo. I would keep public works and public safety strong. I would keep on our roads, alleys, and sidewalk projects. And I would continue to work with the city council that in one commission or another, I've worked with them all and I feel like I've established some good working relationships.
Once again, on behalf of the legal women voters of Brooklyn Park, Osseo, and Maple Grove and the North Hennepin Area Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. I would also like to thank the voters for attending and participating by submitting excellent questions and I would like to thank the viewing audience as well. Remember that if we could not get to your question tonight or if you have further questions for the candidates, we invite you to contact them directly with your concerns. Please remember to get out by or on Tuesday, November sixth, as your vote absolutely truly counts. Thanks and have a great evening.
Thanks, everybody.